Is he here?
I'm here.
Good afternoon and welcome to our class meeting of June. We appreciate those of you in our audience and those of you watching this on our Electric City Television. Our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Chuck Anderson and I will lead us in respect to the flag. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this opportunity to come together and meet as a group and to lead our city. We want to pray for your guidance and your wisdom as we make the difficult decisions that affect all of our citizens and we hope that we do what's best in your eyes. We pray that you watch over all the employees and citizens of Anderson, especially our police officers and our firemen as they do their difficult jobs. And we pray for you that you take care of all the citizens in the United States and that you lead and direct us into your guidance, into your wisdom as to difficult decisions and that we move forward for your best knowledge. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of our June 10th meeting have been distributed. Are there any questions or additions regarding the minutes? Make a motion if that's...
Second.
First by the Mayor Proton, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes of June 10th passed unanimously. Now, one item of old business and that item is request consideration of the second and third reading of ordinance 1307 adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2013-2014. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Mayor and Council, again, I appreciate the time you took for the budget work sessions. We also had the public hearing two weeks ago at the council meeting and you gave first reading. There's been no changes from our end, so we recommend a second and third reading of the budget tonight.
Any discussion or comments from council?
I move that we adopt this on second reading.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, pass this unanimously on the second reading. Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve on third reading.
First by Mr. Horvath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have a budget and pass this unanimously on the third and final reading. Appreciate everybody in all divisions and what they did to bring this budget. Again, thanks for council, it's hard work. Now, several items of new business. Our first item is request consideration of a grass and weed cutting contract for code enforcement. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is an item that you address each year. It is part of your budget. Unfortunately, there are some properties in the city that do not get responded to as far as the maintenance, but I would like to say that most property owners, when they're notified, are responsive as far as maintaining their lots. So, what the city does in the case where we can't locate owners or these properties, in many cases, if you saw in the executive summary, 66 of the 86 on this list have actually been forfeited to the Anderson County Forfeit Land Commission, which means no taxes are being paid and they're not even being reclaimed by the owners. So, now what the city does, they budget money, we have the lots cut on some kind of regular basis throughout the growing season and the growing season seems to be a little stronger this year. And what we have for you tonight is 86 lots. They were bid out. The low bidder is D S and Sons at 16,435. This current contract requires an initial cleanup, which will begin immediately on these lots, and then mowing on a two to three week basis until October, which means that these lots will get maintained about seven times during the growing season and again, a lien will be put against the property. I did have a chance, I think Councilman Stewart would like to address maybe, because again, most of these lots are in his seat and Dr. Thompson's seat, so they may have some other comments, but we would certainly like to get moving so that these don't become too big a nuisance for the neighbors.
Thank you. Any comments? Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to suggest is that because of all the rain that we've been having, I'd like to see if we could amend this to be cut at a minimum of at least twice a month, because going once a month every three weeks cutting grass, just imagine how tall your grass gets once a month. And so, if we could amend that to cut them at a minimum of twice a month every other week.
What was the bid specification?
For two to three weeks, depending on the items. I didn't mention that Alan Eklund and John Johnson are here. This is in their territory. Again, John inspects these and on a regular basis and then again, the contractor, it's a per unit.
I mean, I don't think we can change what the bid proposal went out and they bid on that. I think whatever that is, what they bid on.
I think they agree that the unit cost right on the lots, you need an extra cut and they would do it.
We have a per lot cut, right, so if we need to extend as that.
What I would say...
Well, the bid is two to three weeks, so did they bid on two weeks or did they bid on three weeks?
Seven times. The bid is each person bid on the initial cut and then subsequent cut per cut. And we estimated when they did bid, I think they estimated that it'd be seven rate cuts. That was just so that we could get a figure of what the overall contract would be. But the actual bid that's put in, it would be like $100 for the first cut and $20 for each cut thereafter.
So, it actually gives us...
Each bidder would have a per cut price if they did more than seven.
It could go over the budget? I guess it could go over the bid amount if we...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this, the, actually, I guess Frankie says their bid doesn't say 16,435. It says there's $100 for the initial cleanup and then so much for each of these 86 lots, pretty much, because they're dirty in size. And so, if you wanted to cut them more often, then you multiply that $20 times eight instead of seven and that would change that number.
Got you. Mr. Roberts?
John, I want to ask you a question. All lots aren't going to be the same anyway. One might need cutting every two weeks, one might need cutting every three or once a month, but...
What we're trying to do is...
John, do me a favor.
I'm sorry. What we're trying to do is in the past, is we've cut every two to three weeks. We've actually had a schedule in the past where it was actually every three weeks. Last year, because it was a kind of a drought year, we were actually to save, we were actually able to save almost $6,000 by not having it cut as often. We did it on a as-needed basis, what we determined needed to be cut. When we cut one lot, we haven't do the entire list. They're all pretty much in the same state, same growing state, the same situation, so we can just have them cut all at the same time for billing purposes of nothing else.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Lockridge.
Who decides on when the lot should be cut?
Well, myself, Alan Eklund, Bud Chitwood, all of us in the office, we're on the road every day, all day, we see these lots and to write somebody a ticket for an overgrown lot would be anything over 10 inches. Obviously, we would never let it get to that point, so we would want to have it cut before that.
I think this is a reasonable price and I think it probably would balance out within the budget, that contract that you've already had. So, I would recommend that we accept this bid, the low bid of 16,435 and cover, you know, as many lots. And I think this will actually balance out to keeping our city much better than just having those lots grow up, because I know every year you find people who own lots that you can't even find out where they are, they won't answer, and the people who live in the neighborhood are complaining about the lot being overgrown. So, this is a good way to do it, I think. So, I move that we accept this bid.
Mr. Stewart, go ahead, Mr. Stewart.
Well, I don't think 16,435 is the bid, it's, or it is, it's, I'm kind of confused. They give a per cut price and you just use that number to get an average.
You'll go by by seven lots?
Yeah, that's what we've done, is we've taken the total for all 86 lots, multiplied it by seven, so we had some kind of a budget number to go by. And like I said, if we end up in a drought again this summer, we may not have to do a cut as often as we need to and thereby save money, or we may have to go over, and if we have to go over, I would assume we'd have to bring that back to council for approval.
What do we do, and I know we discussed this in our community meetings, there's other lots that's not even on this list. What do we do about those lots? Do they, is the low bidder automatically awarded those lots that may need to be cut or do they have to come back before full council to be redone again? Because this is probably, it's just a small hair in a big piece of grass and a lot of weeds right now, how many lots we got out there.
Yes, sir, that's a good question. What we end up doing is, like, a lot of these lots are on the Forfeited Land Commission list. Those lots are bought nearly every day. Somebody's buying a lot or acquiring a lot or redeeming a lot. Those lots would come off of our grass cutting list, opening up a slot to be able to add another one as they come in. You know, we're constantly getting new lots that need to be cut because we couldn't serve somebody a summons to bring them into court to answer to why their lot wasn't being cut. So, when we take one off, we can always add another one on.
Let's go, Mr. Chapman, then Ms. Anderson.
I just wanted to say that I, you know, and I believe we have the staff that knows when they need to be cut. We've got a bid that's based on when those are needing to be cut and if there needs to be some adjustment along the way, I think that that seems reasonable. So, though that, I'd like to second Dr. Thompson's motion.
What, I'll go with you. Ms. Anderson, I'll go there next.
First and, well, first by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Chapman, Ms. Anderson.
I just want, if you could give us some information about D and S Sons, who they are, where they, I've never heard, where they from, what kind of equipment they got?
They're out of Belton. We've, we actually awarded them a contract three years ago and they cut this, not the same list, but they cut the lots for the city that were contracted out, did a great job. They do a real good job on the initial cleanups and they were very responsive when we changed a lot or, you know, added one or subtracted one. We never really had any issues with them as far as cooperation, was working with us.
They have the adequate equipment to get all that stuff through?
Yes, sir. That was one of the requirements in the bidding process, that they provide us with a list of equipment that they'll be using throughout the season to cut those lots.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Well, I just, you know, we have a first and a second and I think this is a good starting point, but again, I would just like to, you know, maybe challenge some of my other council members who may not be familiar with these lots and you look at it every day and I know Dr. Thompson and Councilman Roberts can appreciate it because he's, his business is right in the heart of where all these lots are at, but when you have to sit here and look at grass and complaints every day, all day long, and have to look at it again three weeks later and it's still not being cut, and when you're having to cut your own grass every week, I think it may give you a little bit different perspective instead of saying, "We're going to cut the grass every three weeks and maybe get them on a more frequent basis."
Well, I'll respond to that, because I have a situation in my area that it's, it doesn't ever get cut. It's 24 hours a day, seven days a week that people looking at it and we haven't seen, have not been able to apparently do anything about it and it's very frustrating. I know y'all know what I'm talking about, but I'd like to see if we can pursue that. I know that's off the subject, but...
Well, I think it needs to be added in with the rest of them.
Well, again, Mayor and Council, I would say that this is a flexible contract, you know, and certainly the constituents talk to you guys and you talk to us and so we have some flexibility. If there's some that are growing a little quicker, we'll get the word and if you're not satisfied with the pace that we're moving, we'll adjust accordingly.
I think that's a good segue into it. Further, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. All right, John, you're on the gun, man. Request consideration of a, B2 is request consideration of an ordinance to adopt the 2012 International Codes requirements for building construction. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think a couple of our council members agreed. We've learned a few things in the last few hours that this is probably not the model ordinance right now, needs some adjustment and I appreciate the Council Roberts and Councilman Chapman with their expertise in architecture, construction, bringing that to attention. If there are no objections, we'd recommend we table this ordinance and they've offered to help Alan and John and our staff reword a couple things that will make it better.
I can make that motion, we table it. Second.
Mayor Proton, second by Mr. Chapman.
Discussion?
The city attorney says postpone.
Sorry, table, yeah, postpone. Postponing or tabling? Postponing, I think that would be the proper, it can come back, right, as a postponement in a year. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, postponement, passes unanimously. Our third item is request consideration of police department application for the juvenile assistance grant known as the JAG program regarding the street level criminal apprehension program. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Captain Stacy Blair is here tonight to represent the police department, but some of the rules and regulations regarding these grants have changed. One of them is that now it must be approved by you before we accept it. I think that's great. I think the public should know that we are accepting this grant. This particular one is the Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, $14,990 is to operate the street level crime apprehension program. What that is, is we, the city hires off-duty officers to come in and work overtime, so strictly for overtime, to work and saturate high crime areas. The goal is to reduce violent crime. So, I think law enforcement officers tell you, sometimes if you work hard on the everyday crime, it tends to bring the violent crime down. Does not require match. You've had it since 1997. Again, just the rules and regulations are changing that require you to approve it publicly and make sure that everyone knows we have it. I don't know, Stacy, do you want to add anything to that?
You've, you've covered everything. Just ask them. Anybody have questions for Captain Blair?
I think it's a good thing, so I move that we approve this.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion?
I got just one quick thing, Mr. Mayor. Captain Blair, how many more, I know we've had this for a while and we've done real good at getting different grants. I know we're still pursuing all those, we, and I'd like to also thank you for getting all those grants, because it's able to fund the police department. How do we, how are we looking on some other grants? I know y'all aggressively go after them.
I can't speak to the other grants that we're currently seeking right this minute. I really don't know. I know that we are in pursuit of other grants, but I'm aware of this one.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any other comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks, Cap. Next item is request consideration of an ordinance to amend section 18-49 of the Anderson City Code regarding animal care. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this, this actual ordinance began to move at the request of several of the council members who had complaints about constituents and we've also seen these changes by Anderson County and Greenville. So, this ordinance is modeled, again, Captain Stacy Blair and Michelle Smith, our animal control officer here tonight. We have met as a staff. We're entering the July and August when it's terribly hot and I'd have to be quite honest, we, the pictures Michelle shared with me were not, they were very disturbing about the way some people keep animals and therefore, you're certainly welcome to make changes and study it, but I would encourage you to move it forward as soon as possible to relieve some of these animals and their conditions. But what it is, again, we are mobbing at the Anderson County in Greenville and the main thing is the ordinance addresses proper shelter, tethering, which is, again, it's like a leash or chain that dogs and, and they are also, we've had a couple council members mentioned that a number of dogs is also an issue. So, all those things are in place. Again, I've had a couple of questions from council members, I'm sure there'll be some comments. We'll wait and see what those are and then the staff will make the recommendation about going forward on, on the first reading. Would you like, Michelle, or anything to address, anything for you ahead of time?
Maybe, and Michelle might have to come up. I notice some, some places, I see some dog lovers or, is there anybody in general audience that'd like to make any comments in regards to this? Yes, ma'am, would you, if you would, would you come down and tell us who you are and your address and where you live, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Patricia First. I live on 201 Glenwood Avenue. I'd like to first applaud the council and the staff and the city manager for a wonderful intent and I hope it follows through to alleviate the suffering of the poor dogs you have described. However, I would ask that you reconsider the part of this proposed ordinance that limits a family to only four dogs. I would suggest there are many families, my own included, who take excellent care of more than four. We love them as family members. They are confined always behind our fence and they are beautifully cared for. And I think there must be a way to distinguish between a family like this, and there are many, and families or other, excuse me, others, individuals who harbor many, many dogs in terrible conditions. I hope that you can find a way to do this. I would suggest you consider licensing as a way to recognize a family that acknowledges their, their pets and takes good care of them. I simply ask that you consider, reconsider that part, the four dog limit, and find other ways to alleviate the suffering while still allowing families like mine to keep all our pets. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
In my personal opinion, I prefer no tethering, period. But since you are going to have guidelines that will make tethering more humane, I believe that this is a step in the right direction and I support it. However, I read the ordinance and also in my opinion, if you want an ordinance to be enforceable, it has to be simple and it has to be reasonable. And this ordinance seems to be a little bit too strict. You're asking people to tether animals for only two hours a day and there are people who tether animals for many hours a day. So, too many people will violate this rule. Also, you are saying that somebody has to be with the dog at all times when it is tethered and I believe that this is a little bit also too strict. Too many people will violate this rule and if the ordinance is too strict to be enforceable, usually it doesn't receive the respect it needs. I hope that this ordinance will go to a committee to be studied one by one to decide what is reasonable, what is enforceable, what needs to stay on the ordinance and what needs to be amended. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Rhonda Sims and I'm the founder of Freedom Train Animal Rescue Transports and I just want to make a general statement. I want to thank each of you for considering, doing something about the situation with the animals in our city and in our county. There are many of us who are working really hard every day to try to help the animals in this county. We're coming together to have events to raise funds for spay and neutering. We recently had our Bonnefit, our annual Bonnefit, we raised $15,000 to spay and neuter animals in Anderson County to try to lower the numbers that are being euthanized and the numbers that are roaming the streets. And there are many of us who are working to try to get animals out of the shelters who would be euthanized otherwise and we're able to do all of those things and work really hard, but many times it's the county and city ordinances that we just have, we're unable, we have no control over. We see these dogs in deplorable conditions on three-foot chains, living their lives on hot pavement and those are the things that it doesn't matter how hard we work in what we normally do to rescue the animals, because we don't have the power to do that. And I just really want to ask that you consider making an ordinance to where these animals can be helped in areas that we're unable to. We can spay and neuter animals all day long to try to get the numbers down that are being euthanized, but these animals who are living out there every day and suffering, they really need you. They need for you to speak up for them and create an ordinance that's going to relieve their suffering. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, what, tell us a little bit about, what do you see out there? What's your, is the tethering the big issue or talk to us a little bit about?
Tethering is a large issue that we have. It probably consumes about 75% of my personal call volume, just regarding the well-being of the animals that are out there.
Are these normally coming just from neighbors or just...
Neighbors, passersby, you know, people that are just passing through our city and, you know, run across situations that they've previously been unfamiliar with. You know, this is a law that's already been passed in a lot of places and, you know, it's kind of time for Anderson to catch up. We just, there are probably, in some areas, every house on the street has at least one dog tied to a stake or a tree or a cinder block in the backyard in horrible conditions.
Any questions, council?
Comments?
I got one.
Then, Mr. Lockridge.
Well, you know, I, I know it is a problem out there and I know Michelle's been to our community meetings and we have a lot, we have a lot of problems in my ward and, but I do agree with, you know, what I'm hearing tonight. I do think that, you know, I, I think two things. One is that we need to keep it moving forward because we need to do something to help these poor animals, but at the same time, we need to do like Art said, is to send it to committee and let's take a look at it, because I've heard a couple of things here tonight that is not even included in here. One, well, we talk about tethering dogs, but we all assume it's in a backyard, but it could be on a hot pavement like the lady just said, so, you know, that's not even talked about, well, where do you tether them at? And then, two, the lady here who, you know, had talked about it, and I know Michelle and I had talked about before, is like, when dogs are running loose, when they break their tethers or whatever, nobody wants to claim them. Well, maybe, you know, there's some type of registration, a $5 fee that they have to register them with their police department, so ladies like this lady here who, you know, could keep more than four animals at our ordinance. So, I do think there's some room in there where we could take it back to our Public Safety Committee, if asked appropriate committee that would address it and really fine-tooth it a little bit further between second and third readings.
Mr. Lockridge?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Stewart. One of the things that, that I heard tonight was this, what this lady said from Glenwood, was that she has more than four dogs and she takes very good care of them. And that's probably the exception and not the rule, but I'm sure there are people out there who do just what you do. You have dogs and, and I've, I don't have a dog right now, but I've, I've had them in the past and they do become a member of your family. And I do know how you feel about that kind of thing, so I agree with Mr. Stewart that we maybe need to put this to Public Safety Committee and let them work it on, work on it a bit.
I guess one of the issues...
Dr. Thompson, go ahead.
Well, you know, we hadn't mentioned the cats and the reason I bring them up is because our neighborhood, in fact, I just talked to Michelle today about the cats who don't belong, I guess they're community cats, I guess, because they roam the neighborhood, they jump on your cars and they dig in your flowers and I don't know who they belong to. So, I'm wondering, and she works very hard, Michelle, I appreciate it, you caught a cat in my yard today. And I'm always, because we just have hugest number of cats that come and I like cats, but I don't own a cat. So, is there something, I wonder if there's something in this ordinance that addresses that or not, John?
We talked a lot about dogs.
But we're talking a lot about dogs, but, you know, the cats become a problem, too. So, I think when we put this into committee, that we should address, how do we deal with cats who are just roaming the streets and houses, and maybe somebody will adopt them? When you catch them in your trap, Michelle, what do you do with them?
Ms. Thompson, the cats that you're referring to are generally part of our feral cat population, and they're not owned by anyone. They're not necessarily pets at all, but more or less wild cats, that a lot of them live in our sewer system, they live in abandoned buildings. You know, a cat can pretty much make a home just about anywhere. They're really resilient animals, and so they're not necessarily owned by anyone, which limits us on what we can really do as far as controlling where they go. As you know, the most we can usually do is try to capture them and remove them from your area if they're becoming a nuisance.
But do you carry them to the animal shelter?
They go to Paws, yes, ma'am. At Paws, they determine their, whether or not they're feral, or they can, you know, be turned into a pet for anyone, and...
By feral, you mean what?
Wild.
Oh, okay. And if they're wild cats, you can't do anything with them?
No. Ms. Halligan, then.
Mr. Chapman?
Real quick, what number do you think, how many dogs are tethered now? I mean, you said there were a lot of them throughout the city, and, you know, if we were to pass a no tethering law, how would we, will we just go pick up all those dogs, or will we write citations?
Yes, sir. The best way to probably approach this would be to give a grace period for people to make some changes, you know, within their home, within their family, as far as where their dog's kept. You know, give them a chance to put up a fence, or contact an organization like Freedom Fencing, who will come and help them put up a fence, so that they can keep their pets, you know, at their home. And if after their grace period's up, and they're not making any sort of positive movement toward correcting their situation, then they would be issued.
Are we looking like at a hundred, or two hundred, or fifty?
A thousand ninety-seven is our failure to comply.
You're talking about number of dogs, number of tethered dogs?
Oh, we're probably in the three to four hundred range.
Wow. Mr. Chapman?
I was just going to say, I agree with Councilman Stewart and Lockridge, but I think, too, that I just want to make sure that we don't add another ordinance or another fee for all the law-abiding pet owners out there that have one or two animals, that maybe we set it up so it can be something more like, after three, you can have multiples, but there's some way of tracking the ones that have multiples that could be, you know, to make sure they're following the guidelines, and rather than burdening the one or two pet owners that are, that have, you know, that, that's, and that's, I would imagine that's probably the majority of the citizens that have pets, they have one or two. The exception would be three or four or more, I guess.
Mr. Roberts?
On our existing law, now, what's the most dogs we can have?
We do not have a limit at this time.
I thought we had one at one.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Sorry.
And we currently don't have anything, obviously, in place with tethering, but we do have a fine process. But sometimes that goes to who's the owner of the dog, right, in regards to that?
And may I say something? We had a situation occur in my ward, and you know about the situation where somebody had, like, multitudes of pets in their backyard. And the problem was the fact that they weren't taking care of the pets, and they weren't keeping the waste up. It was a smelly situation for the neighborhood, and everybody was complaining about this situation. And that can be a problem when you have a whole lot of animals like that, when somebody just lets them run, you know, a born-free kind of situation. But I think it's a good idea, what he's talking about, is if you have, maybe let everybody have up to four pets, but if they have five or six, have some type of registration for that type of situation. I think that's a good idea.
I think it's working. We've done. But my counsel would be that this July, and I think it's so hot now, and that's mainly you guys' concerns, is that your hands are kind of tied right now. And I'm not opposed to going back to public safety, but it needs to be done quickly.
Second, third reading, yeah. Let's move it forward.
Let's pass this reading and do it on second, third.
Are y'all, I mean, can we do that?
I would recommend that you pass it. Certainly, we'll have Michelle at the meeting. We'll schedule it in the next two weeks with public safety, if that's the direction. I'd also like, we obviously have some citizens and people who are concerned that could offer some good input. So, I'll just ask them, if we can get their names and addresses or phone numbers. A lot of times, the public safety meeting will be open to the public. I know Art will get there, but the other folks aren't in the normal mode of watching for our ads when they will be, so if y'all would leave us some way of contacting the others. And Michelle may have some of them. I'd like to have some input, especially from some of the organizations.
Good. So, what I'm hearing is, is that we could pass it on the first reading and in between the second and third reading, out of public safety committee. And also... Are any changes to the amended policy?
And also, between those readings, Michelle, if there's things that's going, you're going to need to help enforce this, make sure we know what the cost of those things are going to be, because I know they're, talk about things about, how much is a tetherway? Is it ten percent of the dog's body? What tools you may need to determine those factors when you go out there? So, anything that you need, it'll help us, you know, as we move forward as well.
Mr. Purvis?
We could also include for the committee to come up with some type of phased-in approach, as she suggested, you know, some grace period, and it's not in here now, but we need to make that part of the process and announce it at the same time.
Agreed. I agree.
The staff did need, and that was part of the discussion, and I'll read it again. I have great care of respect for Michelle. I've been talking to her in the meetings, and she has some good direction, if you've heard tonight, and she has a good feel for what's out there and how to deal with it.
I'll make a motion when we pass it on first reading?
Pass second. First by Mr. Stewart. Second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Our next item is request consideration of a construction contract for the old North Anderson water line improvement project. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, Council, as part of your master plans for the water and sewer systems, we have ongoing maintenance or improvements. And before I forget, Jeff Caldwell, our utilities director's here, and he can help me if needed. This is a budgeted item that was in this year's budget for the improvements of the old North Anderson water line area. And in your backup, you will see that that old North Anderson area is James Street, Henry Avenue, Hunter Drive. Then, on the other side of Lindley, there's Central Avenue, Edgewood Avenue, portions of Northview and Boundary. About eight thousand linear feet of pipe. A lot of those lines are dead-end lines, which means that the quality of water is not up to your standards, so we're changing those. I did have a question, and I'd like to remind the council that after purchasing the Duke Water System in two thousand two, basically from two thousand two to two thousand eight, you did a lot of improvements. There were tanks added, tanks improved, a lot of the transmission, the major lines were upgraded, so, and again, that's just kind of history. It took six years to bring the big parts of the system up, and now you are at the point where it's time to look in the neighborhoods. Actually, Councilman Lockridge asked me a question, what other lines have you done? I mean, we've done everything from Rose Hill, Freckle College, Hembry, Marketplace Drive, Revere, Simmons, Green, Welco, Shannon Way, East Belt Line, Mulberry Square, and Liberty Drive. Those are the ones you've done since two thousand eight, so this is the next one on the list. And so, what we will do here, there are also some other issues in this area for some sewer and storm drain on the Hunter Henry side. We'd like to award the contract to J&amp;M Construction. Jeff can speak to their pre-qualifications and experience, if you'd like for him to.
Yes.
They were the low bidder. We'll start them on the Central Avenue side, and then, short order, we'll have the sewer and stormwater recommendations, so when we get on Hunter Henry, we can do it all at one time. Our recommendation is to award the low bid for this eight thousand linear feet of water improvements to J&amp;M Construction out of Anderson, South Carolina.
Good, thank you. Jeff, tell us a little bit about J&amp;M Construction.
J&amp;M, we have used them in the past on some smaller projects where we've moved folk services from backyards to front yards where lines have been put that were never really, projects were never really completed. They are local from Anderson. They did have the bonding to bid the project, and they will have to sign performance and payment bonds after the award.
Any other questions, comments?
So, you have used them before on smaller projects?
On some smaller projects, yes. They have bid, they have bid on other projects, they've just not been the low bidder, so we're excited to work with them.
Based on your knowledge and expertise, do you think that these are the, these people can handle this particular job?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I move that we adopt this contract to redo the water system for old North Anderson.
First by Ms. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Our last item of new business, request consideration of an agreement with Anderson University regarding parking. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I did notice Dr. Wintergreen come in, and we appreciate having him with us, and Beverly, you know, Miss Beverly over there, from Anderson University. And again, in your executive summary, I'll cover a few points in here. Anderson University is considering a location downtown. The city is certainly excited about that. The university population, they bring a little distinct vibrancy to downtown, and the university presence could versatileize the population that we have here and businesses, and enjoy opportunities from that diverse people in the downtown. Again, what we've looked at is, it's important to them to know that they have a unique situation of classes and professors and sometimes special events, and have asked the city to look at some parking improvements for them or agreements. So, what you have is an agreement that you've seen a couple of times, talked about in executive session, and here's basically the specifics of the agreement. The agreement between the city and AU provides for an exemption of parking charges for a minimum of sixty spaces within the garage for the university students, employees, and guests when they're using the university's property. Parking spaces are not reserved, first-come, first-served basis. Right now, parking in the garage is free and open to the public. This agreement provides that the university will be allowed that parking as long as it is free. If that changes, then we would look to accommodate them in some other form or fashion that would not cause a financial burden, but provide for convenience. It is an agreement for four years, beginning when the university acquires the property, and renewable for four years unless either party gives a thirty-day notice. This agreement would not impede or violate any of the covenants and the tax-exempt bond that were used to finance the parking garage. So, again, I think it's a great opportunity for the city and AU to partner together and provide for their presence in the downtown. I know you may have some other questions. I appreciate the work that Linda McConnell and Frankie McLean have done on this, and again, you may have some questions of them.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Ms. Chapman?
I believe, you know, as attending or graduating from a school that is a major player in its downtown, and I think if, you know, upon passing this, I think this is going to be a positive movement for our downtown, bringing young people back to keeping them in downtown. So, I would move that we accept item B six as presented.
Second. First by Mr. Chapman. Second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion?
I agree with Mr. Chapman. I think this would be great for the city, with the kids downtown, or the students downtown, their families coming. I think it'd be a good thing for us, and I think we ought to try to work with them as best we can.
I agree with that.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The agreement passes unanimously. Thank you. Administrator briefing?
Only the calendar, and as we get in the middle of the summer, there are fewer events. We still have the block party on Thursday nights for June. And next week will be the celebration of Independence Day on Thursday, so city offices will be closed. The biggest thing is that Greenville will be hosting the annual municipal association meeting. I think most of you are planning to register, but if you have any questions, just let us know. That's all we have, Mr. Mayor. And we did have an executive session if there was any need for a discussion of the parking agreement, but since you've approved it, I don't think that would be necessary.
Good, thank you. Good meeting. I entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Mr. Roberts. Second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Standing.